Good evening. Good evening, let's go on the record. It is February 9th, 2023, and the current time is 7:22 PM. The, we are at the St. Louis Community Cali- Florissant Valley in St. Louis. The question and answer portion of the public hearing just ended. It went on awhile. If you had questions for the parties in this case, I hope you were able to get those questions answered. Now, the Missouri Public Service Commission has set aside this time this evening for a local public hearing in file number ER 2022-0337, a general rate case which is captioned as "In the matter of Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren Missouri's, tariffs to adjust its revenues for electric service." My name is John Clark, and I'm the regulatory law judge overseeing this hearing tonight. Now, the Missouri Public Service Commission regulates the rates charged by investor-owned utilities to, in Missouri, to ensure that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality of service and the safety of operations of Missouri investor-owned utilities. The commission is made up of five commissioners: Chairman Scott Roop, and Commissioners Maida Coleman, Jason Holsman, and Glenn Kolkmeier. One commission seat is currently vacant. With me tonight, next to me, is Commissioner Maida Coleman, and participating via WebEx are Commissioners Jason Holsman and Glenn Kolkmeier. Now, the commission employs a staff of engineers, accountants, attorneys, financial analysts, and other specialists in the field of utility regulation. And Commissioner, would you like to make an opening here?
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to say thank you all for being here this evening. I know that it's been a late evening already with the, with you being here since 6:00 PM, but we do appreciate you being here. We look forward to your comments, that we will, of course, go onto the record and give us an opportunity as commissioners to look at what you've had to say and the evidence or the comments that you're making. I'd especially like to welcome the young people who are here today in the audience. Thank you for starting out very early in life, and we appreciate you all being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, as I indicated earlier, there was a Q&amp;A portion, and this is the formal portion of the hearing. This is an official hearing of the, local public hearing of the Missouri Public Service Commission, and it is being transcribed by a court reporter so that the commissioners can review it later, and any commissioners that aren't here tonight will have an opportunity to review it later. I'm going to begin by asking the parties that are here this evening to enter their appearance for the record, starting with Ameren Missouri.
Eric Kendall Banks, on behalf of Union Electric doing business as Ameren Missouri, night 18/24, Choto Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63103.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. And on behalf of the commission's staff?
I'm Eric Vandegrift, representing the commission's staff. P.O. Box 360, 200 Madison Street, Jefferson City, Missouri, SIS 5102.
Thank you, Mr. Vandegrift. On behalf of the Office of the Public Counsel?
Nathan Williams, Chief Deputy Public Counsel, P.O. Box 2230, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65102, appearing on behalf of the Office of Public Counsel and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And there are a number of intervenors in this case, and I know that at least one is present tonight.
Yes, I'm appearing on behalf of the Consumers Council of Missouri, John B. Kaufman, and my address is in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Now, for those who would like to provide comments today, I'm going to call the names that are listed on the list in the order they appear. At that time, if you'll come up to the microphone, I will ask you to state and spell your name for the court reporter in the official record, and at that time, I will place you under oath, and you'll have an opportunity to offer your comments. There's a lot of people here tonight, so I'm going to ask people to limit their comments to five minutes. It's my intention to end this local public hearing at 9:30 this evening, so I'm going to ask that people be concise and to the point in that regard. Also, after you've had an opportunity to offer your comments to the commission, please stay at the podium for a minute. The commissioners may have questions for you. I may have questions for you, or some of the attorneys that just introduced themselves tonight may have questions for you. Now, if any of the attorneys have questions, please get my attention so that I can direct the witness to answer your questions, and if the commissioners have questions, just chime in at any time and then go ahead and interrupt me because I may not catch you otherwise. Now, the commission, and part of the reason that we could not be up here earlier during the Q&amp;A portion is the commission will not be able to answer your questions tonight, and that's because the commissioners have to remain impartial until after the evidence is presented at the evidentiary hearing. So if you have further questions that weren't answered this evening, I would encourage you to contact Ameren Missouri, the commission's staff, or the Office of the Public Counsel. I also have, and I'll give out at the end, a couple of phone numbers. One has been provided by Ameren Missouri, and it is a customer service number for questions that arise out of this, well, I think just for any questions you may have regarding Ameren Missouri service. And the other is the Missouri Public Service Commission Consumer Services number, and I'll give those out at the end of the hearing. And the last thing I would say is there are going to be a lot of people that are speaking this evening and offering comments to the commission. Some people's comments may not agree with yours. Please be polite to the people that are speaking, and give them the respect that you would like them to give you if you were speaking. With that in mind, I'm going to call the first name. Yes, go ahead.
The only thing I would add is if something occurs to you after this proceeding's over and you want to provide input, feel free to submit comments to the Office of Public Counsel or the staff. You can do it through EFS, there's information on the handouts as to how to do that, and there's contact information for the Public Service Commission staff and the Office of Public Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, and I apologize, please correct me if I mispronounce your name at any time. Maisha Johnson? Ms. Johnson, would you state and spell your name for the record?
Maisha Johnson, M-Y-I-S-H-A-J-O-H-N-S-O-N.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what would you like to tell the commission this evening?
First, thank you for allowing me to be here to speak with you all. I am a resident in the Third Ward. As you heard me earlier speak of, in our ward, many folks experience high rates when it comes to utilities. Some of the people are in subsidized housing as well as Section 8, and when they're unable to pay their utility bills, it often leads to them losing their voucher, which leads their family to being part of the unhoused community. We're starting to see a lot of this since COVID has started, and it's not, it's just not fair because we didn't put these rate hikes in place. We didn't ask for the inflation. We didn't ask for the illness that takes place in households. And it's become a barrier to keep up with the utilities as they continue to rise. For, my question for you all is, what is the plan? Because it's not helping right now. You need money just as well as we do, but we're struggling to survive right now. Many of us are. And the babies are starting to show up in spaces we would never phantom for them to be in. What are we going to do? Is this the world that we're coming to? Or are we going to stand up and say this is inhumane of continuing to put families at risk? I don't have anything else to say because it just, it hurts my heart to see the experiences that family goes, families go through, just as well as myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Are you here speaking as a resident of the Third Ward, or are you representing an organization?
I'm here as a resident.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Ms. Johnson. Elise Mack? Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Elise, E-L-Y-S-E, Mack, M-A-C-K.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what would you like to tell the commission?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the chance to testify. My name is Elise Mack. I use she/her pronouns. I am a lifelong St. Louisan, and I am here as part of the River City Climate Collective. I and we, like the one person who's preceded me so far in the hearing, vehemently oppose the proposed rate increase. While it is empowering to hear that our community is so far united on this front, it is disheartening to know that this decision lies with four individuals who hold a lot of power, some of whom have direct ties to the fossil fuel industry, and not with the people. Even more disheartening is knowing that the executives who are greedily clamoring for this rate increase make between $4 and $10 million every year. I fail to see why a company that doc-dumps toxic coal ash into our water supply refuses to invest in excessively-priced and genuinely sustainable alternative energy sources and made over $1 billion in 2021, as well as $2 billion in 2022, needs an extra $300 million right now. Perhaps Ameren should have budgeted better. Perhaps they should cut executive pay, or turn out the lights when they leave the office. Perhaps they could stop lobbying Jeff City or Washington and let democracy function for the people and not for their special interests. Perhaps, for their convenience, the Public Service Commission could offer Ameren a budget billing option if, you know, a billion dollars isn't going to quite cut it for next year. Maybe this would offer more peace of mind and an income level that stays the same even when the temperature outside doesn't. An issue, mind you, that is exacerbated by Ameren directly, who runs the sixth most polluting coal plant in the entire country. And as we learned during the question and answer session, this rate increase isn't even pretending to support the expansion of renewable energy sources. While Ameren was busy making $2 billion last year, I was worried about my dad. That year, his doctor, or in 2021, rather, his doctor prescribed him a CPAP machine so that he doesn't die suddenly in the middle of the night, but the machine requires electricity in order to function. This rate increase directly threatens the lives of those who use electricity-dependent medical equipment, like my dad, and can't pay their exorbitant electric bills. Ameren's life-threatening behavior isn't limited to those who use medical equipment, though. The corporation's continued reliance on fossil fuels like coal threatens us all. They are ensuring that the planet will get hotter and hotter, creating more instability in the grid and possibly rolling blackouts which could easily kill someone like my dad, and the many like him who rely on electricity to make it through the night. On top of it all, they spend an obscene sum on lobbying to ensure that policies might, that might hold them accountable are never passed. We, the people, should not have to take $12 a month out of our inflated grocery bills, out of our student loan payments, out of our childcare budgets, out of our car payments, out of our medical bills in order to support a dirty corporation that continues to profit off violating the Clean Air Act and making our collective futures even less livable. I and River City Climate Collective call for Ameren and for the Public Service Commission to take on some personal responsibility from their seats of power and finally do right by our community. Stop this rate increase. Stop all utility rate increases, and stop disconnecting people's life-saving power. Put the power in the hands of the people so that we can provide a more sustainable future for and with each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I have no questions. Grace Iverson? Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Grace Iverson, G-R-A-C-E-I-V-E-R-S-O-N.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you've got a phone, and I've heard a few go off, if you would mind silencing them, I'd appreciate it. And what would you like to tell the commis-, the commission this evening, Ms. Iverson?
First, I'd like to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to testify tonight. My name is Grace Iverson. I live in St. Louis, and I'm also a member of the grassroots group River City Climate Collective. And I'm here tonight to advocate both as part of that group and just as an individual against the proposed rate increase. And I was thinking back, you know, having this rate hearing during the winter makes the memories of the summer electric bill struggles a little bit further, but in preparing for this hearing, I was thinking back to last June when I got a phone call from an elderly friend that I used to bring groceries to every week. And she uses an oxygen tank, and she struggles with managing medical conditions on a day-to-day basis. She's this awesome person. She's really tough, she's really incredible. She used to teach special ed in, you know, places where she didn't have a lot of support for that. And she's been through a lot personally, but every time I saw her, she had something funny or positive to say. But last summer, I got a phone call from her about her Ameren bills. She was afraid she was at risk of being disconnected and had been trying to sort it out, and was at this point of just being really panicked. So, of course, I wanted to help her and helped her raise money to cover her minimum payments with Ameren. But it leaves me thinking, like, why are we scrambling to keep our elders' electricity on when Ameren executives, like Elise mentioned, are taking home $4 to $10 million bucks a year? Why are we scraping together $5 here, $10 from this person to make sure that our friends can stay alive, or even just stay comfortable in the increasingly hotter summers? Ameren will say, you know, they offer so many assistance programs, but there are so many stories that we have from our communities, and I'm sure people here have stories that, you know, they aren't enough, they aren't accessible enough. And I start to wonder why we should even need assistance programs when, again, Ameren's making $1 billion in profits in 2021. And we're being asked to pay for our own destruction because Ameren's continued to burn coal and gas for decades, knowing that it's contributing to climate change. They spent millions lobbying in Jeff City and DC against climate and environmental legislation, undercutting the clean air and water protections that are supposed to be for us. And there's some of the dirtiest coal plants in this country and a coal ash waste problem to go right along with it. We know that maintaining the electric grid and transition to clean energy does cost money, but we know that Ameren has forced us, the people, to pay over and over again for this corporate greed. We've paid our bills, we've paid our fees. Sometimes we've paid our neighbors' bills. And we've, we've paid for the Ameren-fueled climate change-induced flood damage and other events like we saw this last summer. We've paid for healthcare costs from polluted air. We've probably paid for Ameren to lobby against us in the legislature. It's a little hard to work out all the details. And we've paid for executives and shareholders to profit off a necessity that should be held in common. So, not only do I personally and as part of River City Climate Collective call for no rate increase. Again, we call for no more rate increases, period, no more disconnections, and for community-owned and controlled clean energy so we don't have to keep getting screwed over by a corporation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Scott Will? Would you, would you please state and spell your name?
I'll do it all. My name is Scott Will, S-C-O-T-T-W-I-L-L.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do. Hello, I apologize for reading off my phone, but I want to make sure that I got everything out that I have to say. My name is Scott. I'm a resident of St. Louis, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I take issue with Ameren requesting a rate hike in times like these. We all know things are getting more expensive. Wages are low, and the cost of living is high. So you'll have to forgive me if I'm not exactly thrilled that a company that made over $900 million in net income last year comes asking for more. Considering the massive amounts of tax credits that Ameren gets, it feels an awful lot like Ameren is double-dipping into my pockets. I pay those taxes that Ameren gets for building green energy, and I also pay them for the privilege to be able to turn my own lights on. If Ameren is having budgetary issues, I believe there's some folks with laptops out front that could help them with that. Also, I looked into this green energy project that Ameren wants to raise rates for. They're not building the dang solar farm, they're buying it. They said that this farm could provide energy for 40,000 homes a year. Well, considering they disconnected over 53,000 people last year, that seems a little backwards to me. How are you going to ask me to pay you $12 more every month in a time like this? We're out here every single day having prices raised on us just to line the pockets of some executive that doesn't even have the courage to come down here and face us themselves. I know you good folks here are representing Ameren, but how hard would it be for your board, your CEO, your COO to come down here and look us in the eye and hear what we have to say? I have one more point I'd like to make. I take issue with the whole idea of this Public Service Commission. As near as I can tell, no utility in Missouri has ever been denied a rate increase. I was here a few months ago for a spire increase, and y'all listen to the public. The people tell you they couldn't afford those increases. You heard little old ladies, women that were pillars of their community, tell you that they wouldn't be able to keep their heat on this winter. You saw them cry, and you still raised the rates. I mean, what is this? I looked on your website, and I saw no place where a citizen of Missouri could request a rate decrease. I saw where we could leave comments, sure, but nowhere in this whole oversight committee is there a place for a citizen to file an appeal for a decrease to these outrageous rates. If the Public Service Commission actually cared about hearing what we had to say, they wouldn't have one meeting on a Thursday right after work. They'd have multiple meetings every day so everyone in St. Louis had a chance to voice their opinion. They'd set up comment drop boxes at churches, libraries, or schools. Ameren gets to talk to the committee anytime they want. They can send letters to them all the live long day, but we only get this, an online meeting, and the chance to navigate the terrible website. I'm sick of it. Ameren should be dissolved. Their plant should be turned over to the people. The working class of St. Louis should have a real voice in how our utilities are run. And why should a public good get to be run for profit? Why should the committee that should be here to hear us be allowed to operate like this? I don't think it should. This is basically a rubber stamp in a kangaroo court. Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you, but it appears one of our attorneys does, Mr. Williams.
Just one. I believe you referenced a solar facility that you said Ameren is not building, but is buying.
Yes.
Do you know what facility that is?
I believe it's on the piece of paper which I don't have in my hand. It's the one that's referenced in the rate increase.
Oakfin Solar Farm.
Oakfin Solar Farm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jack Hampton? Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes. Jack, J-A-C-K, Hampton, H-A-M-P-T-O-N.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to tell the commission this evening?
$2 billion in profits going to lie in the Ameren shareholders' pockets. Let's go over some facts real quick. Ameren's executives make more money in a year, one year, than most of us will ever see in our lifetimes. The upper end of that salary range is $10 million for each of them, every single year. I wish I could sit on my button in office all day for $10 million. Instead, just like everyone else down here, I'm taking time out of an already exhausting day to tell you what you already know, that we can't afford yet another rate increase. We're out here making $15 an hour. Do you know what an Ameren executive makes in one hour? You're not going to like this. While they're working out how best to screw us over, an Ameren executive is making about $5,000, not in a week, not in a day, in one hour. That is twice what I make in a month. Don't come to us demanding more of what you already know we don't have. Don't come to the people and say that you don't have the money for solar panels, that you don't have the money to close dirty coal plants, that you don't have the money to restore power to the families disconnected on winter nights or summer days. It is a lie, and it's an insult. We know better. The proposed rate increase is an inhuman scheme to rob the poor and give to the rich. That's the utility that Ameren oh-so generously provides, something tantamount to a Ponzi scheme. This necessity is already impossible to afford for so many. Next, they'll be charging us for sunlight, for clean air to breathe. Oh, but wait, they already do that. Our rate has already increased, and we're paying it whether we like it or not. The price we pay is our polluted air from coal burning, fracking for the crude oil that powers Ameren's electrical grid, the corruption and pollution of our world for the sake of insatiable corporate greed. Explain how they're investing in clean energy when the Rush Island Coal Plant is still open after years of empty promises. Explain how they're protecting the environment when solar energy costs more from Ameren than natural gas and coal. Explain how they're serving their customers when you disconnect them without warning, or charge them $75 for supposedly their non-functional HVAC unit taking up space heating in their house, something that really happened, by the way. Actually, don't try to explain this. I'll do it for you. Ameren and the PSC are driven by greed and callousness towards the people they claim to protect and serve. We don't need these clowns. We have better options. Imagine if we had even the smallest amount of regulation on utility prices. We would keep people from homelessness. We'd be able to keep our lights on. If we controlled our own utilities as a community, we could keep people from having to choose between warmth and food, between shelter and clean air. Stopping this rate hike is non-negotiable. You've got your money already, now give us our world back. And I'm not going to be taking any questions. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Jen DeRose? Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, it's Jen DeRose, J-E-N-N-D-E, capital R-O-S-E.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I'm Jen DeRose, and I'm the Missouri Beyond Coal Campaign representative for the Sierra Club, but the comments I'm making tonight are sort of personal, they're very personal. First, I want to thank you commissioners for showing up, especially you, Commissioner Coleman. Thank you so much for being here in person. I do appreciate it. And thank you to everyone who came out and spoke out and submitted comments online. I really appreciate the advocacy. We need it. I'm here, obviously, to state my opposition to this rate hike, and the reason being is because in my early twenties, I was personally impacted by energy burden, and it very nearly ruined my life. I was scraping by, doing odd jobs, working at a local record store full-time, trying to make ends meet. I was trying to figure out how to go back to school. I moved into an apartment I thought I could afford with my then-boyfriend, but unfortunately, when the weather turned harsh, so did my reality. The energies, and the energy bills I had to pay were crippling. I think Maisha was up here earlier talking about some hundreds of dollars. That is also what I experienced, and a lot of other folks are experiencing this, too. High energy burden is a major problem for residents in the city of St. Louis. So anyway, that was way beyond what I could afford. And during that time, it's not an exaggeration to say that I survived on beans and rice, which, I'm vegetarian, so I'm going to eat beans and rice anyway. But, you know, I didn't have anything fancy during that time, that's for sure. And I had to do without medicine, or seeing doctors, or buying new shoes when I desperately needed a new pair. So my then-boyfriend and I scraped up enough cash to put a deposit down on a different apartment, which we were assured had more reasonable energy bills. It did not, and I was forced to move again. It did not, and I was forced to move again. The strain of these financial burdens contributed to the end of that relationship, and it prevented me from going back to school, not exaggerating, for nearly eight years, as I tried to catch up and prevent mounting debt. As you know, it is really expensive to be a poor person in this country. I'm lucky. I found resources to help me. I'm scrappy, I'm resourceful, and I'm lucky. I managed to survive and navigate the system without being disconnected. But again, this is a factor of my luck and my privilege, not necessarily like that this is bestowed upon normal, average people, right? Most people aren't able to get out of the oppressive chokehold of poverty. It's unconscionable to raise rates at this time, when simply staying alive is so expensive, and while Ameren's net income was $990 million in 2021, in the third quarter of 2022, net income attributable to common shareholders was $452 million, up from $425 million in the third quarter of 2021, and Ameren said that this was due to, the profit increase was due to the previous rate increase, which is like, abhorrent, again, I'm using the word again. Lastly, it is really, no, wait, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. It's abhorrent to raise rates while continuing to invest in dangerous, polluting, coal-fired power plants, when renewables can lower and levelize costs, because there's no fuel charge for the wind, for the sun, you pay for it once, there's some operation and maintenance, and then it runs on air and sunshine. Plus, the financial benefits of the Inflation Reduction Act should be able to shield vulnerable communities from these extra costs of increased transmission, increased renewables. Lastly, it's ridiculous that we, the rate payers, have to pay for Ameren's lobbyists, litigation costs for their pollution, and greed-washing advertisements that claim their support for communities while they disconnect the poorest and most vulnerable among us. Lastly, we are being asked to foot the bill for litigation fees from Ameren's illegal pollution at Rush Island. The Department of Justice is one of the plaintiffs in this case, so in a sense, as taxpayers and rate payers, we're paying for both the prosecution and the defense while benefiting Ameren shareholders. They're the only ones who I see benefiting, in my view. I really appreciate you taking the time to come to St. Louis and listen to us, and again, I want to thank everyone for showing up today.
I do have one question.
Sure.
You said that Ameren attributed
Yeah.
the quarterly rise to $452 million to their previous rate case.
Yes.
And I was wondering where you were getting that information.
That is a quote I took directly from their website, I believe. It might be from S&amp;P. I can find you that information and give it to you if that's, if that would be acceptable. It's probably from S&amp;P.
Standard and force?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, wrong part. Oh, my name is Sharon Jones, S-H-U.
You can move the mic so that you're most comfortable.
We can hear you. Can I do this? Okay, perfect. I'm sorry. Now I feel like I'm in church again. Continue, I'm sorry.
You've already said and spelled your name, so... Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, it is.
And what would you like to tell the commission this evening?
First, good evening. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you all showing up in person, and I appreciate folks that I know and don't know in the audience for making comments. And my name again is Sharon Jones, I use she/her pronouns, I'm with Homes for All St. Louis, and I will be representing some of the renters and renter workers we work with at Homes for All St. Louis, as well as myself as a resident of the 15th ward, which will be the 6th ward, that's another story, in St. Louis City, and as an Ameren customer. So I wish that I had the passion and the eloquence that the young folks who spoke before me had, and I wish I had the ability that Maisha has to tear the heart out of someone when given their story, but I don't have either one of those abilities. What I do have, though, is a little bit of, I have folks in the community that we work with who have told me their stories, and who have told me what they would wish you all as the Public Service Commission to know about this rate case. I and the folks that I represent as a part of Homes for All St. Louis are opposed to this rate case for a number of reasons. And first, I should give you a little background information. Homes for All St. Louis, the folks that we help organize are mostly low-income renters of color, especially black women. And so I'm not just representing myself as a woman of color, but other women of color who are also low-income and who work long, hard hours for a living. So the renters I represent, they're already, they're already energy burdened. They already pay as much as 20% and 30% of their monthly income on utility bills, like Maisha said. Some of the folks I know, utility bills have gone from $30 to $50 to $100, and these folks are struggling to get by as it is, so an increase of even $5 is too much for them. They can't afford any more rate increases, like I just said, and not only that, they don't understand how companies that make absorbent in profits can disconnect folks. These folks also want, they've told me that they don't understand how a rate increase can pay for litigation on a case. They don't understand that, and frankly, neither do I. And also, I can tell you what they do want. They want better service, they want, they don't want folks to be disconnected, especially if they can't afford it, because if they can't afford the utility rates, turning them off isn't going to make them afford it even more. And they want clean energy. Folks who I represent understand that the energy that they consume is dirty, and that the energy they're consuming is not renewable, and the energy that they're consuming is a part of climate change that is literally destroying where we are living. And I want y'all to understand that I feel the exact same way as these renters, as the other renters that I'm representing. We don't want to see a utility, we don't want to see an increase in rates because we can't afford it, we're already energy burdened, rents are going up, wages aren't going up, and we're struggling as it is. So because I'm a solutions-based person, let me offer a solution to Ameren. Instead of asking me, and instead of asking other renters for an increase in rates, pay your executives just a little less, just a little, I'm not asking much. Go from $9 million to $8.5 million. Or, you know, or offer actual programs that offer actual utility assistance for folks, and not blaming the customer when you ask them to wash their dishes at 7:00 in the morning, or use their dishwasher at 7:00 in the morning. So like I said, I am, I'm representing not just myself, but other folks, and we want y'all to know, we just can't afford it, and they can, so ask them to do it and not us. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Rachel Scholl, R-A-C-H-E-L-S-C-H-O-L-L.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead.
So I agree wholeheartedly with what I have heard with the other speakers. I am also very much opposed to this rate increase proposal. I grew up in Florissant, and I still live there, and as you can see, I have three members of my family, they have two younger siblings too, so our, we have five kids, all in all, and my husband is also here, supporting me with the two youngest outside, they were getting a little rambunctious, the kids, not him, but... Mainly, we, like, when I think about our society and I see all the problems, I just keep on looking at it more and more holistically, and I was sitting here thinking about the movie The Matrix, and how, you know, you have that scene where you see that humanity is like basically in a coma, and they're all just human batteries plugged into this system, and that's such a disturbing image, and it's so powerful. But that's the thing, it's like when you have a public utility, and it's not owned by the public, and it's for profit, who's the battery? We are the batteries for Ameren, instead of them being the batteries to us. This should be something that is owned by the public, used by the public, because I don't have a choice to choose another company. I have to pay my Ameren bill, or else my electricity's going to get shut off, and our family would potentially be kicked out, or be on the street. We have friends who are experiencing housing insecurity and homelessness, and we don't want to see that happen to more families like us, or us. So I just want to make sure that you guys see, not just the next generation that is going to have to deal with the air pollution and the, every other mess that we're kind of just snowballing for them now, that they are already, at 10 and 8 years old, concerned about and asking questions about. They're not just the future, they're the present. They're those kids that have to listen to mom and dad, having tense conversations, saying, "We need to prioritize our budget." And it does create conflict sometimes, and it does create hardship, and that's just not something that the people whose names are on the bill are experiencing. It's our kids, and it impacts families, whatever our families look like, chosen families, whoever, like, the people in our lives that we lean on. We need more of that. We need to come together and keep on supporting each other, exactly like the vibe in this room right now, and I am so excited to see how many people came out, and I'm excited to see more of this, because this is what our situation actually necessitates, and if we don't come together, like, we know how much is at stake. So I'm just grateful, and I, I know that the harder things are, the more the community is going to have to make our voices heard and support each other. But we need our leaders to step up and to truly fight our battles that we elected y'all to do. We are depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your comments.
Ms. Scholl?
Yes.
Any of your children got anything to say? Come over so I can hear you, please. Can I have your name, please? Kaylee?
Kayla.
Kayla, that's a pretty name. Thank you. And you wanted to say?
Um, I don't really like how you're just using a whole bunch of money, and you don't even really need it, you're taking money from the poor. Like, we have, like my mom said, that we have some friends that are actually homeless, probably, and they can't really pay any bill, probably because they can't afford a house and all the electricity it needed, and I don't, I just don't like that. And it's also like some other people say, said that there are some, like, you're making dirty air, and why can't you just use, like, other stuff? I know that we need some stuff, but we don't need that bill. And it just doesn't feel right, like, you're getting all the money, but we don't have, like, a whole lot of money. We're trying to get a house, and we can't afford to get a house, partly because you're using all the energy bills. Like, we need that money to buy a house. We have a house, but it's getting a little bit too crowded, because we have, like, five children.
And do you want more brothers and sisters?
No.
Okay.[1551.21][1551.21](laughter). Good answer. Thank you, Kayla. As a matter of fact, I think now everybody else can leave because she's summed it up.[1562.83][1562.83](applause). Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Can I add one more thing? I forgot to mention that there are two people in our family that do have breathing issues, and that is something where we are concerned about the air quality, it affects our family directly, and we also have family members who do, you know, lean on, like, CPAP or other medical equipment, so this is something that is really, you know, there's just so much to this, and it's hard to even address all of those things, but thanks for, thanks for listening. Thank you very much.
Suba Gunawardana, and I apologize if I butchered that. And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what comments do you have for the commission this evening?
Good evening, yes. As a residential customer, I oppose this rate increase due to several reasons, four reasons specifically. Number one, electric service from Ameren is already our most expensive utility. It costs several-fold that of the other utilities like Spire Gas and American Water. Even though it is the most expensive, it is also the least reliable, considering the number of outages, the duration, and frequency of outages. Those are considerably more than the other utilities. So therefore, even the rates that are current, the current rates as they are, are not justifiable, considering that it is not very efficient. The proposed rate increase, as far as I know, I don't see proper justification for such a large rate increase. I haven't seen a detailed reasoning where they have laid out in detail the, for example, the costs to provide energy, taxes or subsidies, anything that can offset those, and particularly, they have not specified in any meaningful manner any efforts that they have taken to avoid these increased costs to customers. Then number three, the proposal suggests that customers could avoid the monthly customer charge increase by enrolling in these specific, different rate options, such as the Ultimate Savers Plan. However, those, those rate options come with the demand charge. The demand charge is not explained well on the website, and from, from what they state, the highest usage between 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM will be charged at a higher kilowatt rate. And the way it seems to me, any savings you... And the way it seems to me, any savings you make by enrolling in the Ultimate Savers option would not only, not only be completely wiped out, but actually you might end up paying a larger bill due to the demand charge alone. So it doesn't look like that, that effort, those rate options would in any way cut the costs for consumers. Number four, this proposed increase is a hardship to all residential customers, considering the ongoing inflation and the lasting effects of, of the pandemic. This is a hardship not just to those on a fixed income, but to all customers who are not super wealthy. And as several people suggested before, before, the executives of Amaran could bear some of these costs, rather than pushing everything onto the consumer and raising the rates repeatedly. So as everybody agrees, Amaran is already charging far too much to residential customers. Any additional increase would be unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no questions. David Sully?
David Seely.
I apologize. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, sir.
What would you like to tell the commission?
Thank you for having me. I'm a disabled veteran. Earlier, one of the individuals at Amaran said that their rates here in Missouri was some of the lowest rates in the area. I disagree with that. I'm wearing, I'm an outsider. I'm originally from Texas, but I've been stationed all over the country and many places in the world. This is one of the most expensive places I've ever been in. Currently, we have a house back down in Tennessee, also, and my brother is back down in Texas. The rates here are exorbitantly expensive. I mean, much, much more expensive than in Tennessee and Texas. And the outages that they have here, sometimes, you know, you can be without power for three days at a time in Tennessee. And even in Texas, you can even have hurricanes down there, and you don't even have outages like you have here. So I don't, I don't understand with a big city like this, I think I would probably be able to take care of everything with all the money they got rolling in, you know? You think that they'd be able to take care of the consumers and, and deal with, you know, with the problems that go on here in a big city. I can understand in a small town, sometimes you can't get out there or whatever. But here, it just doesn't make sense to me. And like, when they do rate increases out there in NES, usually they tell you exactly what they did to mitigate those costs. And sometimes they won't even do a rate increase, because they said, "Oh, we did this, this, and this, and we're not going to do a rate increase, because we mitigated it, you know, ourselves." Here, it looks like Amaran just doesn't do anything really and passes it off onto the consumer. It just, it doesn't seem like, you know, they're doing anything here compared to the rest of the country. You know, I, I think that the, 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 the energy cost here is just exorbitant. Something needs to be done, and I don't know whether it's passing it off to the public or anything, but I think, you know, like down in Texas, they allow other companies to come in, they got, they've got choices of companies, and it drives the, the rates down. You need more companies, instead of having just one company dictate to you what the prices are. You need several companies, just like, you know, you can go buy, that's just like saying, you only have one, one car company come in selling one car, type of car. You need more and more, you know, different kinds of companies to come in and drive the rates down. And we'd be a lot better off with that. And I can't think of anything else to say, you know? I think, I think we just need more, you know, better choices.
Both you and the previous person before you had mentioned excessive outages. How often would you say that you are out of power?
I wouldn't know, you know? Several times a year, well, I know we, we've been out of power. I mean, sometimes we lose everything in the icebox, because it's just, it's gone, you know? You have to throw everything out, because, you know, that's why we went ahead and got some solar panels and a little generator to try to hook the icebox up to it, just in case it was out, so we wouldn't lose everything. But, you know, it happens frequently.
Now, when you say several times a year, do you mean three or more?
Yeah, three or more. It goes out, you know? It doesn't, sometimes it doesn't go out for, like, three days at a time, but I mean, it, you come home and the lights are out, you know, they're just gone.
Would you say monthly or less often than monthly?
Uh, at, at least, like, at, at least, like, I don't know, like, when I, didn't it, see, but didn't it go out a little while ago?
Twice a year.
Yeah, it's been, it's a, you know, but I'm saying, you come home sometimes and the light's been out, you know? I don't know how long, you know? But you'll know, everything's blinking, and you know, it's been off for a while. So, yeah, for quite, quite a bit, at least, you know, quite, like she said, at least twice a year, you, sometimes you lose things in the icebox. So, yeah, quite a bit, quite a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Seely.
Thank you.
Wait just a second. I believe one of the attorneys has questions. Mr. Vandergriff?
Sorry, I don't hear very well.
Thank you for your service. Eric Vandergriff, Public Commission staff.
Yes, sir.
You said that you had service, or you saw service in Tennessee and Texas. Was that also public utility, or was it city?
No, 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 no. I was in, I was in the Navy. I was, you know, I'm a veteran.
So for those rates that you said were lower than Missouri?
Oh, in Tennessee and Texas, yeah, yeah.
So was it public utilities like here, or was it?
Yeah, it's a public utilities. Like, we own a house in, and, I'm sorry, in Texas, and we have a house in, here in Missouri, and we have one in Tennessee, and my brother still lives down in Texas. And he has, he's got an apartment down there in Texas still. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sir.
Mr. Williams. Sir, if you could wait just a second, I believe there's some more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Like I said, I don't hear very well.
Along the same lines, I know you referenced rates. I want to make sure that you weren't talking about bills whenever you're talking about the differences in rates between Texas, Missouri, and Tennessee.
It's all of them. The rates are much higher here than down there. And y'all have a lot of tacked-on little charges that I don't, we don't have those charges down there in, like, Tennessee, do we? No.
No, I'm just wanting to confirm you're talking about a kilowatt per hour usage or some kind of a usage-based rate as opposed to bill totals, that's all.
It's both, it's both of them. The, the kilowatt per hour is lower, and those little hidden fees that you stick on them, you know? We don't, they don't, I don't see them in Texas or Tennessee. They're like, they, you know what I'm saying? The, like, the fuel charges and stuff, the, what is those little, little other customer charges and little things like that? You know, they have a couple of little things, one or two, but here, y'all got, like, three or four or five of them that, I don't know what all they are.
Thank you for assuring me that you meant what you said.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Wilcox?
That's Chris Wilcox, C-H-R-I-S-W-I-L-L-C-O-X.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Wilcox. I am the director of policy and advocacy at A Red Circle, which is a nonprofit that serves North St. Louis County. If you're like me, and you've spent any amount of time with poor and working people over the last three years, you know that making a living is becoming increasingly impossible. Help paying for rent and utilities has been the most consistent need presented as the cost of living continues to rise to crisis levels. The government's main response has been to subsidize landlords and utility companies, including Amaran. Despite this, Amaran has been quick to disconnect people in North County, including many families with infant children. As of the first of this month, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is no longer available in Missouri, exactly one month after the state made it illegal to camp on state property. Given the lack of bare minimum services for people...
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I just didn't catch it.
Yes. As of the first of this month, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is no longer available in Missouri. And exact, this is exactly one month after the state made it illegal to camp on state property. And given the lack of bare minimum services for people becoming unhoused, I'm not sure what anyone expects these families to do. Two weeks ago, A Red Circle held its fourth and final rental assistance clinic to help families apply just before the final deadline. Over 60 families show up to our little office, some with multiple, multiple hundred-dollar Amaran bills that they couldn't pay, some because they had to put what little they had into rent to avoid eviction. Electricity disconnect... Oh, true. Yep. Two weeks ago, A Red Circle held its fourth and final rental assistance clinic to help families apply just before the final deadline. Over 60 families showed up to our little office, some with multiple hundred-dollar Amaran bills they couldn't pay, some because they had to put what little they had into rent to avoid eviction. Electricity disconnection could cause this to happen anyway, as many leases specify it as grounds for eviction, including for voucher users, no matter what the government deems they can afford. The bills are unsurprising, as low-income families disproportionately live in poorly weatherized homes with highest energy costs. This month, we've been inundated with requests from families who are at immediate risk of eviction and disconnection. Especially galling is the fact that the cost of living crisis is driven by corporate profits. Rising profit margins account for more than half of pricing increases in data from the Kansas City Fed. This was also the case for eggs, despite claims blaming the avian flu. Now, it seems Amaran wants the, wants in on the action, despite its own mon-billion-dollar profits, even after paying $10 million in compensation to its chief executive. Amaran entirely controls a vital service in a modern society. It is worth asking if anyone should be allowed a single dollar in profit extracted from monopoly over a public service necessary for families to live. All the while, Amaran plans to increase its contribution to climate change by importing more coal, which creates additional particulate pollution contributing to asthma. Asthma, as we know, disproportionately affects the same black and brown families, paying the highest utility rates for living in poorly weatherized homes. These happen to be the same of families most affected by a viral respiratory pandemic still very much ongoing. Why is a hearing like this the closest thing these families have to energy democracy? Begging for-profit corporation not to squeeze them even harder to administer public goods? One way or another, we're done working hours into the night, like at our last clinic, applying for government subsidies for landlords and utilities to maintain safe housing for the families at their mercy. At the very least, we cannot allow their rates to rise a cent more, because every person deserves a safe home and the things they need to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cross?
My name is John Cross, J-O-H-N-C-R-O-S-S.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
And what would you like to tell the commission?
Hi, Senator Mayor Coleman. Yeah. Senator, I just want to say you've always been, you know, on the right side of history. So I hope you would agree with most of them here that we don't like this rate increase. So I hope you'll be on our side, like you've always been. What I would like to say is that, you know, this is a statement from Amaran that said, "We understand there's no good time to adjust electric rates, and we are committed to do what we can to keep rates as low as possible by spending wisely and cutting costs." That's their statement. Well, I agree with you, there's not a good time to rate, to raise the rates, because, you know, you're not looking at the big picture. Maybe you are. You know, the country, majority of the people are going through bad times. Inflation's gone up, prices have gone up, and now you come and ask for a rate increase, just when you just confirm, your officials just confirm, that you got a rate, rate increase of $220 million, not less than a year ago. This doesn't make any sense at all. It's unconscionable that you're thinking of making this race right now, rate increase. I work, I do a lot of volunteer work. I work with the veterans, the Missouri Veterans Enduree. I think Bill Wallace was at the hearing in St. Charles today, you know, making the same comments. My wife runs a free clinic, a health clinic, you know? She takes care of kids between 13 and 24. And the majority of the kids that she takes care of live in places where they can't pay the bills. They can't pay the bills. So, you know, one of the comments that were made by your executive was, when somebody asked, "If you don't get this rate increase, what are you going to do? We'll have to make, you know, internal cuts." That's a very good suggestion. You can start by cutting your executive pay. You know, if you go and find out, you know, Warren Baxter made $9 million in 2021. I mean, this is a public record. You can find his salaries. When is enough enough? You know? Do you need another big house? It's just unconscionable that we are asking for a rate increase from the most vulnerable people. It's really unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Barbara Robinson? Would you please state and spell your name?
My name is Barbara Robinson, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-R-R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I am a homeowner. I live in the city of St. Louis. I've been living in my home for 30 years. I live with my husband, which is, which is on Social Security, and my three great-grandchildren and two sons that live downstairs. The cost of living has gotten higher, food prices has gotten higher, as well as the gas prices. I don't receive food stamps, because I work for St. Louis Public School as a substitute teacher. This mean, this mean I have to pay by, I have to pay for everything that I buy, as well as my utilities, such as the sewer, the water bill, I pay my car note, my two electric bills, and my two gas bill. Because I live upstairs and my two sons live downstairs. I am speaking to the commissioner. This would be a hardship for me and my family if the rate increases. I can't afford it. I am on the CPAT at night. So this, this, this would be a great hardship for me and my family, because I pay all the bills upstairs and down. So I just can't afford it. This hardship is, is really bad for me. So do you have any questions? And plus, I'm on the CPAT machine. Did I say that?
You didn't. Thank you for your comments. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Sheila Davis?
My name is Sheila Davis, S-H-E-I-L-A-D-A-V-I-S.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do. Good evening. My name is Sheila Davis. I'm a senior citizen and a resident of Fountain Park. Living in the house that my grandmother bought in 1940, it has been six generations of my family there. I need home repairs to restore my... I need home repairs to restore my home, but my utility bills are so high, I cannot afford it. Being on a tight budget, it is like energy versus basic needs. I am 71 years old, a single homeowner, and still working a full-time job. Employed by the city of St. Louis for 18 years, I am afraid to retire because it will not be enough money to pay my bills. So it is all on me. Currently, working hard, informing my community, and trying to keep and maintain my property, it would hurt if I was or had an increase in utility rates. I may have to move out of my home that I have lived in most of my life, I grew up there. Taking into consideration of what an increase in utility rates would do, I love my home, I love my community, and the people that live in it. On behalf of the Fountain Park and Lewis Place Steering Committee, this is my energy burden story.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Missouri Public Service, oh yeah, oh, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes. Thank you so much for being here, especially in person. I will also be reading from my phone, my apologies. But thank you for the opportunity to speak today on Amarin's proposed rate increase. It's important for community members to be involved in utility decisions that will impact our community and shared environment. My name is Eileen Jamison, I live in St. Louis, and I recently just graduated from SLU, St. Louis University. And as someone that's originally from Texas, I have seen what happens when the people in charge don't care enough about the people they serve to ensure a reliable electricity supply. While Missouri's electrical grid may not be compromised, its customers will be if Amarin continues to raise its prices, and I doubt this will be the only one in the coming years. This is what happens when a utility company is allowed to monopolize its sector. The stakes are higher. But not for Amarin, whose profits and investors are in no way suffering, but for everyday Missourians who have no other option. Year-over-year quarterly earnings comparisons were positively impacted by the new Amarin-Missouri electric service rates effective February 28, 2022. And this is from Amarin's own press release, released on November 3, 2022. Our only recourse is to entreat you, the MoPSC, to protect us. And to the Missouri Public Commission, I ask that you stay true to your mission statement of ensuring that Missourians receive safe and reliable utility services at just reasonable and affordable rates. To this end, we, the people you are obligated to serve, ask that you, one, not increase the rates during the pandemic and not increase the fixed monthly charge; two, stop disconnections for late payments and invest corporate profits in debt forgiveness; three, adopt realistic and expanded payment and billing plans while ending penalties and fees; four, greatly increase funding for bill assistance and do more to help working families and people on fixed incomes achieve lower bills in the long term; five, greatly increase weatherization and energy efficiency programs to help customers reduce bills, especially low-income customers; and six, replace its dirty and expensive coal plants with clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you, I have no questions. And do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do. Thank you all for being here. According to the New York Times, in 2019, Missouri's energy mix was approximately 80% coal, 10% natural gas, and 10% nuclear. This energy mix hasn't changed in the previous 20 years.
Would you give me those percentages again? I apologize.
80 coal, 10 natural gas, 10% nuclear, and these are 2019 numbers. And those numbers had not changed in the 20 years leading up to that, so let that soak in, that's two decades of no change. I'm 36 years old, and I am fortunate to have an excellent dad. When I was a kid, I would ask my dad about renewable energy. He would always tell me what was gospel at the time, that solar was too expensive, wind farms were fantasy, and electric vehicles might as well belong to the Jetsons. A couple of weeks ago, I found out I'm going to be a dad myself. Now, in 2023, other states have massive solar installations, acres and acres of wind farms, electric vehicles that can go 60 miles an hour in three seconds flat. Personally, selfishly, I would love to buy an electric truck, but I can't do that in good conscience in this state, because it would run on coal. For the first time in 2022, there was a profound breakthrough in energy production. We saw a fusion reactor make more power than was put into it. In the 1940s, North St. Louis waterways and soil were poisoned for generations by the Mallinckrodt Company and the federal government in pursuit of the Manhattan Project. It's time that the government make amends and build the first commercial fusion reactor right here in North County. I don't care what it costs, we already paid for the price in disease and cancer rates. When I was a child, clean energy was out of reach, but now I'm going to have a child, and that's no longer the case. I demand better for my child and for the next generation. My child should not have to live in the past just because they were born in the state of Missouri. I oppose this rate increase. I'd rather pay you to keep your coal and gas in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, I have no questions. Lucy Hannigan? Dana Gray?
Hello, my name's Dana Gray, spelled D-A-N-A-G-R-A-Y.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this evening at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you all for being here tonight, especially Ms. Maida Coleman, I appreciate your public appearance tonight, especially after the last hearing, when everyone was just on video and didn't have their faces shown, I felt like we were talking to no one, so I'm grateful for your presence. I work for Tower Grove Community Development Corporation in South St. Louis, and I'm here to represent the tenants that we offer housing to. And our organization provides housing targeted to households that make 30% to 80% of the area median income. And I have collected comments from some of our tenants, and I want to share some of those with you tonight. Michelle, who is a renter, single household member in Shaw, says, "My off-season bill has already gone up by $30. With the spire increase that recently occurred, my combined gas and electric bills are now upwards of $250 during heavy use periods. That's up $75 from last year. Also, Amarin posted a 9.5% profit increase after the last rate increase. Why do they need another? Our income sure hasn't gone up that much." David, who's head of a household and self-employed, says, "My small two-bedroom apartment costs nearly $200 a month to heat and maintain at 67 degrees. This is outrageous. When will the greed end?" Eleanor, who's a renter in Shaw neighborhood, says, "Between the Amarin increase in 2021 and the spire increase in November, cost of living has gone up significantly. Corporate greed on both parts is going to make it unsustainable for customers of these two monopolies to continue to live without struggling more than they are already." Sabrina, who lives in the Botanical Heights neighborhood, who's a renter and homemaker, says, "Increases like these, in addition to so many other basic living cost increases, are putting many community members in danger of losing the ability to stay in housing. I have a militant budget to keep, and this Amarin rate increase will absolutely cause added strain to our households." Madeline, who's self-employed and a renter, a single person, says, "My utilities have already been shut off in the past due to being unable to make the payments. The cost of living has increased quickly and dramatically, and I will have to choose which necessities I can live without." Another person who asked to remain anonymous, who's single, self-employed, describes herself as a gig worker, working and as a part-time employee, says, "I feel like I'm already paying a high rate for such a small apartment to heat and cool. This would put me way over my budget." Lucas, who is a disabled renter, says, "I live on Social Security and can already barely pay the increased bills. Amarin just raised rates a year ago, and they want to do it again? I will have to choose between electric and medicine if this goes through." Another person who says they wish to remain anonymous, lives in Tower Grove, they are a single person and has an eight-year-old daughter, and has been sober for one year, and they're an hourly worker. They say, "I believe this increase will put me even further into financial instability." Zoe, who is in Tower Grove and is a single person, works for hourly pay, says, "I barely make ends meet, and with the increasing rates of food, gas, and other essentials, the hike in the cost of living, I do not see, I don't see an increase in my wages to accommodate these. This increase of the electric utility will leave me unable to afford anything." Thank you.
Thank you, I have no questions. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
So I'm here as a citizen of the St. Louis area, been here all my life. I'm here as a concerned citizen of the St. Louis area, been here all my life. I've lived in North City, in West City, and I'm now in North County. In all areas, I have went to different hearings and talked since I've come back to St. Louis. I came back in 2008 from Georgia. The utility bills, the first meeting I went to was in, I think, 2010, when I bought a home in West St. Louis. I have an old brownstone three-story, in which I went to the meeting about clean energy and solar panels. When I got to the meeting, and I asked about the solar panels, I was told, "You can't do a solar panel, not for the area you live in." Once I gave them my area, and I asked why. I say, "Solar panels are supposed to be a new clean energy, everybody's going to a new clean energy. I want solar panels for my home." Couldn't get them. I called Amarin up, I tried and find out why it is that my area that I live in does not have a authorization for solar panels. They told me if I, that that area had to be voted on, and it wasn't considered to be a popular thing. The area I grew up in, in North St. Louis, which is Walnut Park area, is not an area as well considered for solar panels, because I inquired about that area due to a lack of trees and shade, due to the amount of sun that they could get. That area was not considered an area for solar panels either. No answer as to why, other than a lack of sun. Isn't that amazing? How is the sun, a lack of sun, in an area that doesn't have trees? And you can go today, and we still, it does not have a lot of trees in that area. The other issue I have is there are power outages. So the power outages come when there's a rainstorm, when there's a windstorm, when there is just a bad day, I don't know what the reasons are all the time, power goes out. We gotta wait for Amarin to come out, turn the power back on. The left side of the street goes out more than the right side of the street. Why is the right side of the street always going out when a storm comes, and the left side don't? Amarin, are you gonna fix the terminals on the poles so that we can have power, and the power don't go off every time the wind blows past five miles an hour? No, that was not a fix for the communities. I'm out here in North County now, and we don't have a lot of power outages, because the power has moved underground. But the problem we have is we still have poles that bring the power to the source that's underground. The poles are ran over, we gotta call them to come out and fix the poles. The windstorm came, the box blew up. That's happened twice. So if Amarin has been pushing cleaner energy and better power sources, and I'm a returnee since 2008, I don't see the improvements. It's not a part of where I'm from. It's not happening in the areas I'm in. I moved out here in North County, I called Amarin to inquire again about these solar panels, trying to figure out how this works, so that this person that's trying to sell me a solar panel can shut up. Amarin has yet to explain to me how solar panels work. I want to know, how is it that you all are asking for a rate hike from over 10 years ago, when you were supposed to have been pushing cleaner energy, and we're still burning on fossil fuels? We don't have a clear plan for this solar panel program where the citizens can take advantage of paying back Amarin versus us paying Amarin. I feel like it's always someone in my pocket taking my money and giving me false stories. It's a false story. You pushed clean energy in 2008. It is 2022, and you want a rate increase for the rears. Isn't 2008 the rears? I'm not seeing the improvements. Solar panels are going up, true, but I haven't heard anybody say that Amarin is paying them. If somebody is being paid by Amarin, let me know, because everybody in this room needs to be on their program. Other states are doing solar panels. Georgia gets paid back. Texas getting paid back. Arizona getting paid- Arizona getting paid back. Missouri, what are you doing? Where's our improvement at for my dollar? Twelve dollars a year, twelve dollars a month, a hundred and forty-something dollars a year. It's a lot of money for a pipe dream. I don't do drugs. I rarely have a drink. Most of my friends can't afford the twelve dollars, even budgeting all their money to save, to function on a daily basis. But we all got one clear question. If we're asking for money in the rears, where's my progress from 2008? When are you gonna show me that you deserve my dollar? I wanna know. I need somebody to explain to me when Ameren's gonna show and prove to me that you deserve my dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Kimberly Finnegan?
My name is Kimberly Finnegan,
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do. As I said, my name is Kimberly Finnegan. I'm a licensed attorney and licensed social worker. I'm a lifelong Missourian and a longtime Ameren customer. I am here tonight on behalf of Legal Services of Eastern Missouri. Legal Services of Eastern Missouri is a nonprofit legal aid organization that has offered free legal services to low-income Missourians for over 60 years. We serve 21 Missouri counties and St. Louis city. Legal Services advances social justice through legal representation, education, and supportive services. Our core values are action, justice, and hope. We work with the community to improve lives, promote fairness, and create opportunities for those in need. I work primarily with rural older adults and adults with disabilities. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, as of December 2022, the year-over-year cost of electricity increased 13.7%, the largest 12-month increase since April 2006, 16 years. As electricity prices rise, the risk of energy cost burdens grow, causing an increasing number of legal services clients to struggle to afford basic household expenses, such as food and medication. One of our senior clients stated, "I cannot stretch my Social Security anymore. I cannot afford to pay more for higher utility costs. I hate the thought of not being able to pay my bills. It is very hard out here for me and a lot of people on fixed incomes. I do not know how people will be able to buy food, medicine, and housing expenses. Right now, I have to pick between getting medicine or food or whether to go see my doctor." We are driving people to desperation. Ms. Borwell, age 67. Unfortunately, urban, rural, and low-income communities disproportionately carry the burden of high energy costs with significant consequences. Black, American Indian, and Hawaiian and Pacific Islander households are often more than twice as likely to forego food or medicine to pay their energy costs than their counterparts. Black and Hispanic children are 2.5 times and 1.5 times, respectively, more likely to live in energy-insecure homes at risk of energy disconnection. Because of these disparities, a utility rate increase will result in a greater economic disadvantage for low-income Missourians and harm our clients. Access to power is fundamental to the functioning of daily life. Light, technology, and adjustments to climate conditions within one's home are necessities that are often the first to go when clients cannot afford their bills. This hinders safe communities, access to lifesaving devices for those with critical medical needs, access to educational technology for young students, and the ability of seniors to live comfortably in their homes. Mr. Matlock, age 70, says, "If these utility bills keep going up, I do not know how we will be able to continue to live in our home down the street from the church where we volunteer and the food pantry that we visit regularly. We love living in our community, but we do not have a lot of extra money to spend. These types of price increases hurt seniors and folks like us the most." Despite the uncomfortable truths about energy insecurity, access to electricity and power is often treated as a privilege rather than a right, and the cost to access these resources continues to rise. Our clients and similarly situated consumers continue to struggle to afford their current electricity bills. Mr. Johnson, age 70, said, "The utility bills in my apartment are already too high, and I don't have enough to go around. I have two utilities, and the combined bills sometimes range from 100 to 250 a month. That is a large part of my Social Security. I have to go months without paying one bill or the other." Ms. Graves said, "People are drowning in expenses as the cost of living and inflation continue to increase. Food prices are increasing. Medical expenses and medication prices are increasing. Costs are steadily increasing, but earnings have not." As the gap between income and the cost of basic necessities continues to widen for low-income Missourians, the inability to pay electricity leads to increased shutoffs, endangering the safety, comfort, and livelihood of impacted communities. And this compounds other problems, such as limited access to affordable health care, the affordable housing crisis, and family and community disruptions, all of which can be traced back to a lack of access to affordable utilities. Legal Services of Eastern Missouri advocates with and for clients who are often underrepresented by the infrastructure systems designed to benefit everyone. In my role, I spend many hours helping clients to access assistance programs, including Ameren's programs. And navigating these programs is an all-consuming endeavor. My clients cannot access many resources that are web-based. I serve clients who are low-literate, have low-technology abilities, and have disabilities to sight and hearing that prevent them from navigating these systems. We at Legal Services emphasize the necessity of access to electricity as a fundamental human right. Denying the Ameren rate increase will sustain the health, livelihoods, and futures of low-income Missourians and communities of color. Legal Services urges this commission to reject the request for a utility rate increase and thereby encourage increased access to critical utility services. The full statements of the clients that I have cited here tonight and my supporting research that speaks directly to how the proposed rate increase will be detrimental to families and communities have been submitted electronically to the PSC and the OPC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Finnegan. Did you have a question, Mr. Williams?
Yes, I do. It's just, how is that submission done? Were they presented as comments or provided as an email?
Provided as an email.
And are you desirous of those being part of the record in this hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, I didn't catch that.
I asked her if she was desirous of those documents that she sent to us to be made part of the record, and she responded, yes.
Okay, would you like those to be a hearing exhibit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna do this the way it was handled earlier. If you've submitted those to OPC, if OPC will forward those on to me, I will send out, I will issue an order giving 10 days for objections, for parties to make objections to the admission of that on to the hearing record before ruling on whether or not it can be an exhibit. But I will, for the record right now, at least until they've been ruled on, they'll be marked as Local Public Hearing Exhibit 1 for this hearing. We've had a number of comments, and we've got a few people that are left. It's just past nine o'clock, and as I indicated earlier, I'm gonna terminate this hearing at 9:30. So I'm gonna ask that, as I call the remaining names, that you try and be concise with your comments. Thank you so much. And the next person is Catherine Kritz.
Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, Kritz, C-R-Y-T-S.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes. It's no secret that this rate increase can and will negatively affect so many people. As you heard from so many in this room, Ameren is trying to pull from empty cups when they already have record profits. My parents are some of those people. They retired and on a fixed income and continue to add more to their debts as they struggle to make ends meet. This fee increase to their Ameren bill would only cause them to go more into debt and go through more financial hardships as Ameren continues to take from us all. Ameren's a monopoly in the area, and there is nowhere else to turn for electricity. Even if we own our electricity, we can't escape Ameren's high fees. I am someone who's going through the process of buying my own solar panels, and it's frustrating to know that I would still have to pay such high fees to own my own electricity. The thing is, while Ameren continues to ask to take more from our communities, it does nothing to help us. Ameren continues to uphold their coal plants, no matter how harmful we have found coal plants to be. I recently heard someone say, who lives near coal plants, "I didn't know it wasn't normal for most people that you know to have asthma." Additionally, toxic air pollution, such as that from coal plants, is linked to cancer. Every time we turn a light on, we can be reminded of our utility company has a hand in the loss of people's lives, are causes of sickness from the pollution that Ameren is responsible for. We have little recourse for holding them responsible and are asked instead to pay them more. Pay them more for what? They're not serving our best interests for our communities. They're incentivized to make as much money as possible, and that is all. It is not fair for Ameren to ask us for more money only so can you to hurt us and to not take into account our best interests. We cannot continue to let them take advantage of our communities. Please abort no on the proposed rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kritz. Jeanette Oxford?
Jeanette Mott Oxford, J-E-A-N-E-T-T-E, Mott, M-O-T-T, no hyphen, Oxford, O-X-F-O-R-D.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here at this local hearing, and thank you for having a local hearing. It's really important that the Public Service Commission do that. I'm testifying tonight as the Public Policy and Advocacy Manager at ParaQuad, ParaQuad Incorporated. ParaQuad is one of the oldest and largest independent living centers in the country. Our mission is to champion equity and independence for people with disabilities through services, partnerships, education, and advocacy. And to accomplish that mission, the voices of people with disabilities must be heard and valued in local, state, and federal government proceedings. ParaQuad is here tonight to express our concern about an 11.64 rate hike requested by Ameren because we know that many households who participate at ParaQuad are already struggling to pay their utility bills. And the recent inflation experienced by consumers makes this an especially difficult time to see an increase in the cost of a basic human need. How do we know that the people that participate with ParaQuad would be disproportionately impacted by this rate increase? In our interactions with people with disabilities, they name two things as their biggest needs right now. One is healthy, affordable, accessible housing, and housing includes having utilities that are connected. And then transportation. Many people with disabilities don't have transportation that they can use, that's reliable, anyway. ParaQuad serves many people with disabilities in the St. Louis area, but Ameren, Missouri's service area being much larger would also have many more people with disabilities. And I looked up some statistics about people with disabilities as a class in the 2021 Annual Report on People with Disabilities in America to give you a sense that there's proof that people with disabilities would be disproportionately impacted by this rate hike. When we look at the area of the gap in employment, there's a gap of 37.4 percentage points, meaning that 38.4% of people with disabilities are employed versus 75.8% of people without disabilities who are 18 to 64 years of age. Households with disabilities have a median earning of $8,548 less a year than people who don't have disabilities. And then people with disabilities have a poverty rate that is twice as high as people without disabilities, 25.2% versus 11.1%. It's also important to realize that when we talk about the poverty rate, it's not a very accurate measure. It's based only on the cost of food. It's an outdated statistic that was cooked up in the 50s and 60s, and it's no longer a very accurate way to measure what it costs to live. The 2023 Poverty Guidelines say a family of four can make it on $30,000 a year of income. Well, you're poor if you make less than that. But there's an MIT Living Wage calculation for Missouri and for every state in the nation. It's also got it for every county in Missouri. And it says that a family of four in Missouri would have to have an annual income of $77,792 for a family of four, if that's two adults and two children with one employed adult. If both of the adults are working, they actually have to make more like $95,000 because even though working makes money, working costs you. You have expenses for working as well, more transportation, more clothing, et cetera. Because of the vulnerability of people living with disabilities, we ask that the Public Service Commission look this case over very carefully, and if any increase is given, it must be thoroughly justified. We also hope that there will be utility assistance provided some way through this rate case to help people with disabilities and seniors on fixed incomes and others that are really struggling to make it, and that the income guidelines for those programs be based on the reality of what things cost instead of the poverty level, which is not a reliable measure. In general, programs like that ought to go up to at least 300% of the poverty level in order to account what it really costs to live. We'd welcome any questions that you have, and I ask that my written and signed copy of these remarks be entered into the record, if you all would allow that.
Yes, would you give them to the gentleman here to look at?
I will.
Actually, I will come get them.
I certainly have no objection to the exhibit, but I do have a couple of questions.
Let's do the exhibit first, and then I'll give you an opportunity to ask your questions, Mr. Williams. Mr. Banks, do you have any objections to admitting that on to the record here?
No objection, Your Honor.
And staff, any objections?
No objections, Your Honor.
And Mr. Williams, you've already indicated that public counsel has no objections. With that in mind... I will go ahead and admit... I will go ahead and admit Paraquod's, I'm going to call it letter, onto the hearing record as local public hearing Exhibit 2.
Thank you. Thank you.
And go ahead and ask your question, Mr. Williams.
I was going to ask how to spell Paraquod. Is it the spelling that's shown on that exhibit?
Yes, P-A-R-A-Q-U-A-D.
And what is Paraquod's mission?
Well, Paraquod is an independent living center. There are independent living centers that are all over the country, but that serve every county in Missouri. We try to make sure that people with disabilities are able to live independently, that they receive the support needed to do that.
So it's more targeted to individuals with disabilities?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Hi, I'm Alex Kelly, A-L-E-X-K-E-L-O-Y.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to say that I think that the people who are shareholders in Amarin U.E. are regular people and that they don't need a pay hike all the time, and that if you gave Amarin a raise that it needed to cover inflationary expenses and then wrote a letter to people who buy electricity and tell them that you gave them a break during high inflationary times, that they would appreciate it so much, they might quit spire and all go to you completely. And let's see, I think the goodwill would be way more of a dividend than any small increase that you could take at this time because people have been through a lot, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Robert, Robert Hanon, R-O-B-E-R-T-H-A-N-N-O-N.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Rather than repeating all that I had commented about earlier in this meeting, let me state a few things. That I understand the idea of the electric company making a profit, but rather than being profitable at this incredible amount when cost of living, expenses, just the cost of gasoline, food, the pandemic, is impacting people much. It's hurting people considerably, including myself. I'm a retired federal employee, and I have no option to change my income. I am at the mandate of the federal government, including expenses. Whether I pay my electric bill or not depends entirely on how much use I make of it. As I have stated earlier, a few hours ago, I have reduced my electric bill considerably by what I have done and much less than what Amarin has done for me. Amarin has incorporated smart machines, smart meters, ability to look at your electrical usage online, and so on and so on. However, trying to slow down or stop your electric usage is not always practical. You can't do things at 2:00 in the afternoon because it's too expensive, maybe not at 2:00 in the morning because it's cheaper. As proof of what I have done on my behalf, I brought and displayed beforehand pages, this incorporates the entire expenses of what I have paid to Amarin for electric bill in one year. It shows every number, what I paid for, and I have savings incorporated because of things I have done, and less so for Amarin. Amarin does not, in my opinion, deserve this incredible increase or profit margin as they wish to do. If you're going to take this profit, if it's granted to them, they should be forced to put their money back into the infrastructure, not to replace old equipment, old parts, old things. Your smart meter did no benefit to me, literally no benefit. Looking online at the computers, at your website, no benefit to me. I have changed light bulbs. I have cut down usage. I have done a lot of things to take my bills and bring them down so low, people are amazed at how I can live on these small numbers because I have done changes, not because of Amarin, but because it's in my benefit. Amarin needs to face up that instead of giving everybody a smart meter, they should be looking for the future, taking their millions, billions, trillions, whatever, putting it into solar farms. One farm, not adequate. One wind turbine, not adequate. If Amarin is expected to stay in existence and run the electricity, in my opinion, they need to look better into the future, the concept of what other countries and states are doing. Europe is far ahead in the use of wind turbines, solar. Even in California, a state that has the highest utility rates of all. What have they done? Forced solar usage. Do we have that option here? No, I hope not. But I would like to have the ability to decide and say, "I'd like to put up solar on my roof. I'd like to put a little turbine to help incorporate, to reduce my electric bill." Currently, I cannot. My area where I live, up the road, does not allow that. Is that something Amarin is working against? Do they support changing legislative rules? For their benefit, yes. For the benefit of the consumer, I don't see it happening. There's only one person I have heard tonight who spoke of the usage of solar, one. How many have spoke here already? How many have said anything about anything other than the exorbitant profit that Amarin has done beforehand that's expected for their new proposal? Where is your comments about what you are going to do for the consumer other than, "Well, we'll just give you a smart meter. We'll give you a thermostat in your house." Your thermostat is a one-time item. Your smart meter sitting outside is a one-time item. My electric bill every month that I mandated to pay is a 12-month-a-year requirement. This outweighs your smart meter. It outweighs a thermostat. It outweighs many of the programs that Amarin seems to be focused on. So you replace a copper wire. So you fix a pole. Well, the consumers, such as myself, are paying for that. You're not getting free copper wire. You're not getting free fuel. You're charging it to the consumer, everything. And then you say, "Well, we'll just impose a profit. We'll submit it to the committee, let them look at the numbers, and let them decide." Do the numbers reflect on how people are struggling, how difficult it is to pay these utilities? This is one of several of my utilities. I am required to pay all of them. Amarin can shop around for copper, for different fuel, to relocate wires, and do a lot of things. Where are you explaining this to the people? Where? On your website? With a high electric rate? Because your wire fell off your electric tower 300 miles away? Wonderful. Do you stop charging people for electric because your wire fell down? Should you not be putting money into rebuilding the structure at a better rate, at a better incentive than saying, "Well, I'm going to take that money. The commission has approved it, and I'm going to make Amarin profitable at whose expense"? I cannot do any more for these numbers. I cannot take those numbers and make them smaller. I have looked and looked. I have looked at your website. I have a smart meter. Do they effectively help me? Essentially, no. Did I pay for it in some way or form? Yes. Did every customer who uses Amarin Electric pay for it? Yes. How can you have a profit? Where did the money come from? Because you charged for sunlight? No, it's because your monopoly of holding one company accountable to all the electric in this region has put profit. Why are the wires falling down? The only time you're fixing is when there's a major storm and you have to cut trees, you have to pull up the wiring, and so on. As I commented earlier, last year I lost my electric. My end result is, rather than throwing out every drop of food in my house, I went and got myself a generator. I paid for it. I run it on gasoline. I paid for it. I paid for the food that was in my refrigerator, and I kept myself going because Amarin could care less. Amarin did not help me with a generator, with gasoline, with anything. You know what it was? Well, it wasn't our problem. The weather blew the wire down.
Okay, Mr. Hanon?
Yes.
I'm going to cut you off here so that I can give some others an opportunity to speak.
Yes, any questions?
I don't have any today, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, my problem is with priorities. Priorities, sorry. I think the timing of this meeting is ironic because today, in the Post-Dispatch, they reported that St. Charles, five of their seven wells have been polluted and are not fit for drinking. They have also identified as the source for that pollution, Amarin. St. Charles now is importing water from the city of St. Louis because of pollution caused by Amarin. I think it's also ironic that we pay for their lawyers and their legislators to prevent them from being held accountable to the pollution that's happening. Their rate increase has absolutely nothing for renewable energy. It has absolutely nothing for dealing with the pollution that they are creating. They now have among the worst record in terms of pollution in coal plants, and they are killing people. They are hiring lobbyists, as I mentioned, to oppose them, to oppose complying with the EPA. And the people that are being hired as lobbyists and lawyers are being paid for by Amarin. So this rate increase continues a business model where profit over killing, or results in killing, excuse me. So I also see a problem with the priorities here of the Missouri Public Service Commission. And the priorities have not been on renewable energy and preventing people and people getting poisoned and killing. Missouri is one of the most backward states in terms of instituting, both legislatively and also by the Amarin itself, in moving forward in renewable energies. And it's not just simply because things are cheaper, it's also because the current programs are poisoning and killing people. So what's at stake here is more than profit. Furthermore, I will admit, I have absolutely no confidence in anything happening from this meeting. I see this as a form of public ritual. The ritual is this. A rate increase is proposed, it's larger than they really want. Knowing that the Public Service Commission will cut that rate, everybody looks like they were accommodating, and the public once again continues the business model, as I mentioned, that is wired into continuing the current process. So as I said, I have no confidence that anything I say or the suffering and the other comments that you've heard here is going to have a dent. I'd like to believe you can prove me wrong, I don't believe it. And here's what I also think, that when people have nothing to lose, and they have nowhere to go, and they head for the streets, you're going to have power ardages, and they're not going to be caused by the weather. And then maybe somebody will listen. I hope I'm wrong, but this is very disturbing to me on so many levels, I can't even tell you. Thank you.
Bob Pickard? Bob Pickard?
That... It is 9:30. I am, and that was the last name I had on my list to speak. At that time, is there anybody left who did not get a chance to sign up who would like to make a comment to the commission? Okay, I see no hands. If you go back to your homes today, or you talk to friends and they wanted to, they indicate that they wanted to leave comments, or you realize there was something you forgot to say, I'm going to give you a couple of avenues by which you can make further comments to the PSC. You can do that by contacting the email address, pscinfo, that's, PSC stands for Public Service Commission, pscinfo@psc.mo.gov, by contacting the Office of the Public Counsel. They've been very gracious about seeing that comments that are made with them get filed with us, or by going to the PSC's webpage. There is a link you can click on that will allow you to make comments on this case. And you may need to know the case number for that, which is ER-2022-0337. I would like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I would like to thank everybody for their comments. While some of these were very hard to hear, I think it's important that the commission gets to hear them. I also would like to thank, it's very clear that a lot of people put a lot of work into their comments tonight. So we do genuinely appreciate and consider your comments, and this is our opportunity to hear them. We get a chance to hear from the company and the other parties at the evidentiary hearing, but these local public hearings are our opportunity to hear from the public. And so we do very much value that. With that in mind, I did indicate that I would give a couple of numbers at the end. Ameren, Missouri's customer service number is 1-800-321-2477. And the Missouri Public Service Commission's Consumer Services number is 1-800-392-4211. There was an individual earlier who did not want to answer any questions, who indicated that people were beginning disconnected without notice. If that's happening, certainly that's, you can call the Public Service Commission Consumer Services number, and they will put you in touch with people to make the appropriate complaint. With that in mind, I hope everyone gets home safely tonight. We will, I will adjourn this hearing, and we will go off the record.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Holsman. And thank you, Commissioner Kolkmaier.